Good evening and welcome to the August 24th, 2022 School Committee Meeting. School Committee is just returning from Executive Session. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have some approval of items by consensus. We'll start with approval of minutes June 22nd and July 8th. Is there a motion? Mr. Turner, seconded by Mr. Fenely. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
I abstain.
You're abstaining? Okay. From both or just one?
Just the June 22nd.
Just June 22nd?
Thank you.
Okay. So one abstention, one absence. And then everybody for July 8th and one absence. We have acceptance of Locust Robotics TV donation. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Fenely. Is there a second? Thank you, Mrs. Burns. All in favor?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you very much. We have approval of disposal of surplus and outdated supplies at the Woburn Street School. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mrs. Burns, seconded by Mr. Fenely. All in favor?
Yes. Yes.
Unanimous. We have warrants G44, 45, 01, 02, 03, 04, R46, 47, 48, 49, 01, 02, 03, 04, 05, and L102, 103, 104, 01, 02, 03, 04, 05, and 06. Is there a motion? Thank you. What's that? It's on the next page, so I'm gonna have to wait. Thank you, Mr. Turner. Is there a second? Mr. Fenely, all in favor?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. And then we have FS77, 78, 79, 80, 01, 02, 03, 04, and 05. Is there a motion? Mr. Fenely, seconded by Mrs. Burns. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
It's unanimous, thank you. And then we have payrolls ending 7/6, 2022, 7/20, 8/3, and 8/17. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Fenely, seconded by Mr. Turner. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. And then we have sped 47, 48, 49, 01, and 02. Is there a motion? Mr. Fenely, seconded by Mr. Turner. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
One abstention. Excellent. That brings us to the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Brand.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. There are a number of items that are both listed as well as included with accompanying documents in the packet, and I'll just go through them in order. They're all informational tonight. First off, starting with the Wildwood Study and the update for that. A couple of weeks ago, I think it was Monday, August the 8th, there was a meeting held through or with the Board of Selectmen, but also in attendance were the finance members of the Finance Committee and also members of this committee, and I thank you for taking a night out of your evening to be there as well, too. For those that were in attendance who had a chance to watch that meeting, there were two reports or two presentations, rather, with information provided as an update on this project. And just to distinguish this Wildwood Study from the Mass School Building Authority Wildwood Project, this Wildwood Study is the capital item that as a committee you approved not that, well, a few budget cycles ago. And this is really centered around trying to find alternative arrangements to house the Wildwood students and programs and staff with the place that we find ourselves with that school closed. In the School Committee Packet are the two presentation items that were included and presented that evening. One was a presentation that I put together with an effort to try and provide some context around what this study is, how it's evolved and developed, and what its ultimate purpose is. And that's included in your packet, and for those members of the community that are watching who might be interested in looking further at that. The second presentation was one provided by our consultant, Doran Whittier. They are partnering with the town and with the school department on this study. Their services were enlisted through a request for qualifications that the town manager oversaw, and we've been working very hard in the background with the town manager, with Mr. Hooper, Paul and myself, over the last probably eight weeks, well, more, three months plus. The next steps in this process are as follows. Doran Whittier, as the consultant, will wrap up their study. They will combine a list of what they would consider as viable options or recommendations for our community to consider as possible solutions to the spatial need for the Wildwood. They'll also pair that with an economic cost or forecasting. Some of these options, not necessarily all, but some of the options will include a cost or would incur a cost, and so they're putting that together. We don't have a definitive date in terms of when Doran Whittier will provide their final report, but we should anticipate it fairly soon. Once that report's finalized, of course, it will be presented to this committee here as well as, I'm sure, shared with the other town committees. The thought here to move forward on this, and rather quickly, is to reconvene the Wildwood School Building Committee. As you'll recall, that committee includes representatives from this committee, the Finance Committee, the Board of Selectmen, and both town and school administration. And the thought is that that committee, when reconvened, will take a look at that final report and help us work through towards a final recommendation. So much more to come with this, obviously. It's a really important, as you know, a really important item for us as we move forward, but I just wanted to share that update with the community at large who's watching this evening. Special Town Meeting, Item 4B. You'll note a memo from the town manager, Mr. Hall, in the packet, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to bring attention to those that might be watching this evening. A special town meeting has been called for Saturday, November the 19th, at 9:00 here at the high school. And the purpose of that meeting is to seek funding for the construction of both the senior center as well as the town hall and school administration building combined. And so that's again Saturday, November the 19th. That meeting has already been formally called, and obviously the town's working through that, so I wanted to take this opportunity to bring attention to that. Item 4C, great news, recent development at the state level, and that, as outlined in the memo, through recent legislation passed in July, if I remember correctly. We are continuing with the provision of universal free meals for all children through the 2022-23 school year. It's obviously not just for Wilmington, but it's across the entire state, so good news, certainly, and we thank the governing bodies for moving that forward, but informational, nevertheless, for everyone. Item 4D, memorandum of understanding between the Wilmington Police and Public Schools. Again, this is for information purposes only, but I thought it important as we get to this place on the eve of starting and opening the school year. This is an updated MOU, memorandum of understanding, and this is not unique to Wilmington. In fact, all school systems, all school districts should have this in place. Formalizes the partnership between the police department and their intersection or interactions with schools. And with, thank you to Chief Desmond for his work on this. He and I both reviewed this. I will share with you that largely speaking, this is a model template that was produced and suggested by the state. We made very few changes to it, but the language that's included in this MOU really does largely mirror what has been suggested as good practice, if you will. It's a fairly lengthy document, as you can see there, but I wanted to bring this to your attention. We will post this on our website, as we did with the most recent MOU. We think it's important to bring this to the attention of our community members, to our staff, obviously, and so on. And so I just wanted to share that with you and within the packet this evening. I'll pause for any questions. I'm sorry, I'm kind of steamrolling through this, but...
I have two, and I'll have another one after the last one, but I just, one comment and then one question if you don't mind me. With regards to the Wildwood Study Project, I made note of which recommendations out of the 13 that were just, were figured out, which ones I would be more positive, which I think would have a more positive impact, take into consideration the current situation we are for student learning and educators, but I also would like for when the committee gets to that point to also consider trying to keep siblings on the same side of town in their thought process and problem solving, which recommendation to move forward with. Because I think in the current situation, there has been some issues with especially the younger kids, the Wildwood students, being on two sides of town and the impact it has on family activities and family time. The one quick question I had with regards to the SRO memorandum is built into that, this speaks about professional development in 20 hours for the resource officer.
Yes.
Who drives that and how is that, who monitors that? How is that gonna be developed?
Thank you for the question, and a good one. So that does fall under the purview directly of the police chief and the police department. That's not to say that professional development that we might be offering as a school district would not be available for the school resource officers, but certainly that 20-hour requirement is overseen by and monitored and planned for by the police department.
And is this memorandum reviewed every year? Is that the intent?
It should be.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
If there are not any other...
And Dr. Brand, can you characterize some of the types of changes that you made where you departed from the model policy?
Actually, thank you, Mr. Ragsdale. So really, just nothing substantive, you know, calling out the changes for the SROs and the names, nothing else, I don't think, and the singers all help me there, I don't think there was anything else substantive that we altered from that original agreement or from the model agreement, I'm sorry. Thank you. The next item, Item 5E, anticipated student enrollment. There are really two things, E and F, I think somewhat go together. I just thought out of interest sake, well, far from it to be any kind of finalized numbers as we are still having changes for our enrollment, and again, obviously, on the eve of opening school. And as members of the committee know, the official enrollment is not taken until October 1st. That's the key date for which we really go on record, if you will, with the Department of Education, so there's lots of things that could evolve here. But I thought that out of interest, if not for anything else, gives you a glimpse of where we were as of a couple of weeks ago in terms of enrollment projections, and so I just want to make sure that there's clarity around that. These are projections, and how that relates to the past school year that we just finished. So if these were, if these projections were to hold, you can see that we have a variance of about 12 students district-wide by which we're down. So again, these numbers may not play out in a couple of weeks as everything settles in, but we are absolutely across the board, and I can't dig deeper into this yet right now, but we certainly can do so in the coming weeks. We are seeing the return of students from private school settings as well as homeschool settings, and so we can certainly tease out those numbers a little bit more if you're interested in that, but that's not surprising to me, certainly for a variety of different reasons, distance from the pandemic, struggles in the economy, often there's a correlation, certainly with private school settings and students coming back. So we will keep you updated as we typically do, but just to give you a sense of where sort of numbers were at as of, you know, a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, Dr. Brand, if the next meeting, can we at least have an update on the freshman class? And that's, that particular number would be very useful enough.
Yep, most certainly.
Thank you.
Mrs. Burns.
Thank you. Just as a general question for you with regards to our enrollment, taking to like the state's proposal to raise those, the MCAS scores for proficiency, how do you think this could potentially impact our enrollment numbers going forward? With attainable, you know how I've made myself perfectly known at a variety of different meetings about my feelings about MCAS and high-stakes testing? And I felt the inequity because I don't think it really truly captures our students' knowledge, especially with the diverse student body that we have and every district has, but do you, is there any concern with regards to how that piece may play into enrollment for our district in the coming years or in the near future?
I'm not sure, to be honest. And Ms. Elliott, I don't know, I mean, just really chime in, I don't know at this point. And I think that in terms of what those changes are, in terms of the, I mean, we have, certainly we'll focus, specific to the MCAS, we will focus on that as a school system, as a school leadership team, with our educators in terms of what impact that has and how that may or, you know, may not alter practice, but regardless of what our enrollment is and where our students are coming from, regardless of the MCAS, you know, the expectation for that, I certainly want to suggest nothing less than the fact that we'll do everything that we can and should to provide the most robust educational experience for all of our students, and we'll continue to do that, so I'm not sure.
I just want to make sure we still are able to offer a diverse curriculum, and it doesn't all become about learning for the test, you know, and whether or not creating additional resources for students to kind of whether solidify the, you know what I mean? For those who may be interested in just honing their MCAS, you know, something like that maybe in the future with regards, not to say that we haven't already done that here, but, you know, just, I guess, more mindful.
So forgive me if I sort of missed the intent of that question, but I don't think, and I'll speak for myself only, I think that what I have seen here in this district is anything but a hyper-focus on MCAS. A focus on best practice, a focus on, and through the recent efforts and leadership of Ms. Elliott, and you've seen through a window into that in terms of looking at other assessments, MCAS to me will continue to be one of many, you know, data points that we'll look at to try instruction improvement, so...
Thank you very much. Appreciate your question.
The last item, just quickly, the Boston Globe article, I included in there, not specifically because Wilmington was included in there, but I just think, within the context of the discussions that we've had around enrollment and the decline, this was a recent article, as you can see there in July, and as folks will note, if you take a read of that, enrollment is down across the state by just under 40,000 students since 2019. I think that's an important piece to call in. And well, as we've also talked about the fact that Wilmington has been one of the communities, certainly that we saw a more significant, relatively speaking, adjustment or decline in enrollment. I think what's also worthwhile noting, too, is so too have other communities. And other communities from, that are a range of types of communities in terms of socioeconomic status and geographical location, everywhere from Rockport to Wellesley to Marblehead to Brookline, have all seen, in particular Brookline, a fairly significant drop in their enrollment, too, since 2019. So I just thought it was, it was worth including for, relative to the discussion that we've had, and I know we'll continue to have in terms of enrollment here in Wilmington. Unless there are any other questions, that's my report this evening.
David.
Dr. Brand, if I, can I jump in for a moment here?
Hi, David. Yeah, Mr. Ragsdale, go ahead.
So I just want to comment briefly on the MCAS issue. I would be very surprised if the change in the competency determination had an effect. One, because it's a statewide change, so every school is under the same standard, the same threshold. But secondly, Wilmington students are already almost overwhelmingly scoring still above the new threshold, so we were scoring above the old threshold, but the vast majority of Wilmington High School students are still passing MCAS on their first try at levels that will exceed the new standard. So there, you know, as before, there may be a few students at the margin who will need another retest opportunity, but I don't, I don't think that it's going to be something that keeps our students from graduating.
Thanks, David.
Thank you for that.
Any other questions? Jay?
No.
All right, thank you. All right, that brings us to new business. Item 5A is the Town Manager Authority and Feasibility Study Agreement. There is a motion here. Did you want to say anything about this before?
Sure. Briefly, in the packet, is a letter from the Mass School Building Authority to the Town Manager Hall regarding Wilmington's continuation in the program. You can see the information that's been provided to him there. Based upon consultation with town council, it is suggested that you, as a governing body of the school committee, provide authority to the town manager to act in accordance with the various things that are coming up with this program. So you can see the motion in that separate memo there, as outlined, and we are looking for your action on this this evening.
Thank you. Would you like to make the motion? Mr. Fenely?
I move to authorize, in accordance with Section 12F of the Town Managers Act, Chapter 592 of the Acts of 1950, and to the extent necessary, delegate authority to the town manager to execute and deliver the feasibility study agreement and any amendments thereto on behalf of the town of Wilmington, and make final binding decisions on behalf of the town of Wilmington with respect to the proposed project described in the feasibility study agreement and any amendments thereto.
Great, thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Turner? All in favor?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you very much.
All right. Item 5B, we have tiered focus monitoring. Mrs. Elliott.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So a year ago this time, I was sitting here sharing with you the results of our tiered focus monitoring, and at that time, just to bring you back full circle, we had gone through, we were at the three-year mark, every three years we are focusing on different aspects of the evaluation process, but we had all indicators submitted appropriately and accepted with the exception of one, CR25, Civil Rights 25, that indicator, which really we were partially implemented at the time. We were asked to develop a, in conjunction with the Department of Education, to develop an improvement plan that would span the course of this school year, this past school year. We had benchmarks along the way, and we completed all of the action steps that were required and submitted our final work, which was basically a report that was the result of survey information that went out to our staff and students. And the Department of Ed received that, reviewed all of our work, and accepted it in full as complete, so we were able to finish all of that corrective or continuous improvement and monitoring plan. And so you'll see in the memo tonight the final report that was submitted to the state and also a slide presentation that was shared with our leadership team and our staff as well. And the report, my intention would have been to do a complete, separate presentation of the report, however, all of this was happening sort of simultaneously, or we were wrapping up one end while we were beginning the equity audit, and that same information was work that would need to be done as part of the audit. So that was shared and incorporated into the audit. So this evening, I won't spend much time going through the details of that. I'm happy to at any other time if you'd like, but most of that information has been, I believe, all of that information has been incorporated into the full audit, and we'll hear about that later this evening. I wanted to take the opportunity to introduce India Barrows, who is here this evening with us. India is our EDI coordinator. We have her for a portion of the time during the school year. We share her with, is it six other districts, local districts, as part of the SCAM collaborative? So she was involved with me. We spent lots of hours looking at all of this data and trying to pull this all together, so she was heavily involved in working, we received the questions, survey questions from the Department of Ed, suggested questions, then tweaked them appropriate for our district. So we worked together to get those surveys out and to get all of the data, collect it all, and analyze that all. So just wanted to invite India to join us tonight to meet everyone, particularly since we've been talking about this work. So happy to take any questions.
Thank you for being here. Okay, now, so should we hold questions? Is that what you're recommending?
It probably would make sense.
I think I'm hearing that, because I have lots, I have definitely lots of questions about some of the data, mostly, I think, as it pertains to next steps, which I imagine we're, I'm looking at the next presentation, we're gonna get to that, so I think we, I will, I will hold my questions, but I don't want to stop anyone else. Do you have anything that needs immediate attention? All right. Thank you for that. So I guess we'll move on then to Item C.
So this evening, I think you have a memo in the packet, but basically, we are gonna move on to the, as I mentioned, the full equity audit report. So Meg Mayo Brown, as we hired Meg through Commonwealth Consulting Agency as part of the work of this committee as recommendation to move forward with this. So Meg has taken all of our information, done audit of all of our documents and all of our resources, our professional development. She's done an in-depth dive, looking at our district overall, looking at all of the survey data, et cetera. I'll let her speak to the whole process. However, there is a slide presentation that is, I think, yep, if you would like to come on up and join us here at the table. This afternoon, she presented a two-hour presentation to our district leadership team, sort of unpacking all of this information, and it was a really excellent period of time to really dig deep into this, so you really enjoyed it, so welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Thank you for having me, and it was such a privilege to be able to work with the district leadership team this afternoon to unpack the report. I understand with all of you tonight, I'm giving the, as Dr. Brand said, the 40,000-foot view. So I thought the process might work as if I go through the slide presentation and then take questions at the end, if that works, through the chair.
Is that okay with everyone?
Okay.
That sounds good. Thank you.
So my goal this evening is to share the summary of the audit report, but before I begin, I wanted to share a little bit about my background, because you may be wondering who is this person that did our equity audit report. But also, when authors do reports, we often, or they often, bring in their own perspectives, and I just wanted to share a bit about my background so that you would understand my perspective. I've been, I'm a recently retired, as of June 30th, superintendent of schools in Massachusetts for the past 14 years. I served eight years as superintendent in Ball River and six years in Barnstable. As part of my tenure as a superintendent, I served as the chair of the Board, State Board of Education's Accountability and Assistance Council, so we talked about how we hold schools and districts accountable, or how the board wanted to. I also co-chaired the Urban Superintendents Network. Most recently, I served on the Distinguished Council of Educators for the National Commission on Social, Emotional, and Academic Development, so sort of taking a good look at how all that work integrates. So again, after 36 years in education, I've recently retired, and I'm really enjoying working with districts and superintendents around advancing equity work. And so the perspective I bring to the report tonight is really through a leadership lens, through a sort of systems design and building lens. So the quote that's on the slide, I just want, I offer for tonight's presentation as a frame, because it uniquely captures the purpose of an equity audit. It's a beginning, not a destination. It's a way of thinking for the long haul. It's not a program evaluation. It's not a judgment. It's not a critique of what's happening in Wilmington public schools. Rather, it's the beginning of your journey, so this is sort of the first step, a snapshot, if you will, of where you are. I have the clicker. I'm not used to having the clicker. All right, so the process of the equity audit began, as Ms. Elliott said, contracting through the Commonwealth Consulting Agency to conduct the audit, who in turn contracted with me. So after the meeting with Dr. Brand and Ms. Elliott, I put together a framework, an equity framework, that really sort of set the goal of the audit as I understood it, key questions, various components of the process and documents, as we've talked about, necessary to conduct the review. So equity audits can be extensive in scope or narrow. The district identified a resource and programmatic equity as audit as an entry point. So given that, given that frame, or what the interest was of the district in the equity audit, I use the Alliance for Resource Equity to structure it. Those materials are open source, they're available, they're a great resource for your schools and school and district leaders to sort of dive into to really do more of an inquiry approach. So the intent of the equity audit is really to build a data story. So what is the current state of equitable outcomes in Wilmington public schools? It was informed by the analysis of student data for trends and patterns, a review of district documents, responses from the district's a review of district documents, responses from the district's student-staff survey. And I, I want to pause there, because it's really remarkable and incredible that the district was able to do that type of survey, where twelve hundred students participated in it, all of your faculty and staff, and all of your administrators. So, having that data available to really disaggregate, look for patterns and trends, was such an important part of the audit. I think the audit would have looked very different if you didn't have that really rich and robust data. So, thank you. So, thank you for that. The next slide offers, again, a frame around equity through the National Equity Project. For, for many, many districts, for many, many years, our focus has been on closing achievement and opportunity gaps for students. And not to say that's not important. It's incredibly important, right? We don't want to have those gaps. But the work of the, of districts has now become more about developing systems to increase capacity to bring about more equitable outcomes and practices, right? So, if we think about systems and we think about practices, if we really take a good look at those, perhaps they will inform why equity, or why opportunity and achievement gaps might exist in the first place. So, I do want to also make the point that this is systems thinking and its design work. And as I've captured on the slide there, Wilmington is poised to engage in, the finding that I have from the audit is Wilmington is poised to engage in the deep and complex work to create and sustain inclusive, culturally responsive, and affirming schools where all students thrive. The district has conditions in place to engage schools in the community in creating and sustaining inclusive, culturally responsive, and affirming schools. So, just in terms of the process for the audit, the structure of the audit report, which you have, you notice in each section includes an orientation to best practice, followed by some of the Wilmington Public School data and findings and recommendations to support the next level of work for the district. And I'll talk a little bit later about the next level of work, how you may, might want to think about that as a district, as a school committee. There are many, many recommendations in the report. There would be no feasible way to tackle those all at once, right? So, the important work of the school committee and the, and the community at large is really figuring out, out of the priorities, out of the recommendations, what makes the most sense for your local context. It's not intended to be prescriptive in any way. So, in terms of the sections, there are seven sections within the report around policy and planning, which examined specific policy, mission, and vision regarding educational equity. Since, and I'm speaking to the choir here, right? School committees establish system-wide goals, adopt policy and budgets, review and provide feedback on school improvement plans, school handbooks, and curriculum. As such, you are uniquely positioned to take specific actions towards equitable practices and outcomes. In the area of teaching and learning, I examine student access to high-quality and culturally relevant curriculum and instruction materials, if students had access to teaching practices that were, are engaging, culturally relevant, standards aligned, and if they have opportunities for more high-quality instructional time or doses of instruction, if they need it. In the area of social-emotional learning, I examine student access to effective social-emotional learning opportunities, and whether targeted social-emotional supports exist for students throughout your schools. In the area of safe and supportive schools, the guiding question was, does each student experience a safe school with transparent, culturally sensitive, and consistent expectations and discipline policies? In terms of family engagement, I explore the degree to which students attend schools that actively and meaningful, meaningfully engage all families. In the area of teacher and principal diversity, whether the, your teacher and leadership workforce reflects the student diversity in the district. And finally, school funding, I examined the funding system here to see if adequate funding based on student needs are, are present, and whether there's the ability to be flexible with the budget to target student needs throughout the system. In terms of highlighting the strengths coming out of the audit report, you know, I've shared that the overall findings indicate that the district is poised and well-ready to do this work. And, you know, here are some of the reasons why. The district has experience in strategic planning that provides clear and coherent objectives and priorities. This structure and experience can be used to enhance and capture strategic goals and priorities that advance equitable outcomes, practices, and experience for your students. A second condition for inclusive and affirming schools is social-emotional learning. The district has prioritized this and resourced it for students. Third, the district has a multi-tiered system of support for students, for academic and social-emotional learning. So, there's a system in place to identify students who need additional support, either academically or for social-emotional learning or development. And finally, the district's funding systems are aligned with identified strategic priorities. Again, as priorities are established to further the district's work in the area of equity, the transparent budget process that exists here already and can identify and reallocate resources in a very transparent way. In terms of opportunities, that was a word that was used quite a bit this afternoon as the leadership team unpacked the report, noticing that there are opportunities. So, there are many, many opportunities. And again, I would just point to the fact that you will have to do the important work of figuring out which opportunities to prioritize first with your, with your community. One opportunity is certainly to explicitly develop and support culturally responsive teaching and culturally sustaining practices. That can be done through professional development and curriculum review. We know from the research and from students and families that when schools are responsive to students' culture and identities, students will have stronger relationships with educators, better learning experiences, and better outcomes. There's a research base and a number of resources that can be accessed in order to develop culturally responsive teaching in all, in all classrooms. And importantly, you want to be sure that students' experiences in school are affirming of who they are and what they bring to your school community. I've also noted inviting students and families to co-create the district objectives with you and regularly revisit, revisit those with you and, and your priorities to really ensure that culturally sustaining practices and equitable outcomes are occurring. So, that's like, who's at the table with you in doing this work? Another opportunity is to continue to prioritize safe and supportive school environments for students identifying as LGBTQ+. I'm going to sort of pause, and I want to amplify and sort of highlight this area for the school committee. So, data sources such as the district survey, results from the youth risk behavior survey, and student focus groups created a pattern that I would urge the district to continue to explore. I've shared explicit examples that occur, that were stated during student focus groups with Dr. Brand. I won't share them here due to student confidentiality. At this juncture, I would say to, to the school committee that a pattern is emerging that students identifying as LGBTQ+ are less likely to feel a sense of belonging and/or emotional safety in school. The next opportunity is to listen to and engage with students and families to identify issues of equity. Again, surveys, town halls, focus groups. But as we talked about today with the leadership team, is, it's not just making those opportunities available, right? It's figuring out with folks around what works, what will increase the participation, and having those conversations before, before opportunities are created to ensure that you're capturing. And finally, support diverse backgrounds and identities with communication that validates and affirms students who self-identify as Black, Indigenous, and students of color. So, sometimes in schools, we don't know how to talk about race or identities. So, we don't. But we need to, because students feel more connected to and motivated in classes that recognize and affirm their backgrounds and identities. There's some great research coming out of the University of Chicago on this. It's about creating an affirmative environment, one that goes out of its way to communicate the value of each and every student and what experiences and backgrounds and identities they bring to, to the classroom. So, again, I've talked a bit that there's just, there's many, many recommendations. I wanted to highlight a couple, not because they're of greater importance, but just to have the ability to talk through some of them with you. So, one recommendation would be to establish an explicit vision and definition of equity. So, one of the activities we did today with district leadership was really exploring that there are different definitions, meanings, perspectives, interpretations of educational equity. Establishing an explicit vision and definition, based on the local context of Wilmington, will assist the schools in doing the very important work of advancing equity. Very likely, a role for the school committee to do that work with the community, with your stakeholders, with your constituents, to define what it is in Wilmington we mean when we say educational equity. Secondly, ensure school improvement plans are articulating tiered support systems for students, as well as explicit student learning goals that promote equity. School improvement plans, I think, are a great vehicle to really articulate work around equity. They require that there is a school council, right? So, comprised of various stakeholders who are at the table, talking about school improvement. They're a very visible, transparent document. They can serve as a blueprint for what that particular school is going to do to, for school improvement, not only for instruction, but also for, for advancing equity. You can capture some very explicit student learning goals in a school improvement plan that promote equity, and I just offer this as an example. So, you may see in school improvement plans, students, a goal that states students identified as economically disadvantaged will demonstrate proficiency equal to their academic peers. Right, so it's naming where the gap is and what's going to be done to address it. A third recommendation is to continue to provide opportunities for students and teachers to develop strong relationships grounded in academic and social-emotional learning. We know relationships matter. Your students were so clear about the value they have in their relationships with their teachers. The focus groups, all focus groups that just came through time and time again, when they have a strong relationship with their teacher, they feel that they learn more or better as one student. I think I captured a couple quotes in the report that one student said, "I like it when my teachers invested in me." So, continue to create those opportunities for educators, to continue to build relationships with, with their students. Elevate student voice. So, there's a variety of techniques to do that. I'm going to show on the next slide just sort of some of the feedback students had after a, after a focus group. And then, again, sort of shifting back to the school improvement plans, there's opportunities, again, in school improvement plans to specifically highlight how you're going to engage families through a lens of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And then, in the area of teacher and principal diversity, we, you know, best practice is to have a diverse selection committee representative of the educators that the district hopes to hire. And finally, continue to monitor district demographics. So, what was, what the data is showing is your English learner population is growing. Your economically disadvantaged or low-income population is starting to increase. So, really paying close attention, right, to those indicators to ensure that you can target your resources to where there is greater student need. So, I wanted to share the side on elevating student voice. So, at the end of the high school focus group sessions, I asked the students if they would write down for me, just on a feedback form, how they felt about their experience. So, that was separate from the focus group questions. But in the end, like, how, how did this feel for, for all of you? And so, I just, there were many, many written comments, but I, I wanted to just capture these to say, your students can guide your equity work. They have a lot to say. They have a lot of, you know, sort of meaningful, impactful, relevant feedback to offer the district. So, just a couple here that I'll just highlight. So, a student said, "Very positive. I felt like I was able to share thoughts I've had for quite, for a while about our school that I haven't had a place to share in the past. I wish we could have had more time to discuss more in depth. Here's, I'm unclear how our feedback will create change. I like how judgment-free it is. Productive, felt like my voice was heard. We discussed things that weren't okay. This should happen more." And then, finally, my last slide in terms of next steps to consider. Again, from a sort of systems design, systems thinking perspective, each entity, school committee, leadership team, school teams, have the opportunities to really engage in prioritizing next steps. So, while the report offers a number of recommendations, as I said, it would not be, I would never recommend, you know, to say, tackle all of them. Figure out, in terms of your own context, what makes the most sense. So, I've just listed a couple of questions for, just for consideration. Again, going back to, how do we define educational equity in Wilmington? How will we prioritize the most promising recommendations to fit our community's unique context? What areas need further exploration and inquiry? So, the report doesn't answer everything, right? So, one of the things that we discovered today, which was, I wanted, I wanted the leadership team to, like, figure out which areas you still have questions about. Like, what areas still need further sense-making? You know, some of it might, some of the report might resonate, and some might say, "Oh, no, 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 we need to get some additional data on this. This isn't, this isn't really making sense to me at this, at this point." That's the purpose of an equity audit, right? To start to lay the groundwork for further exploration. So, and if structures, back to the, the systems thinking piece, right? So, if structures, if structures that exist in schools determine outcomes, and the outcomes aren't what you want them to be, then you need to take a look at the structures, right? It may mean making more struc-, you know, revising structures, but it also may mean dismantling structures. And that's where the community comes in, right? Because there's tradition, there's things that occur in schools that people are very used to. So, as you start to talk about maybe dismantling some structures that are leading to some inequity, that's, that's a bigger community conversation. And then, I would just emphasize, again, that this work happens in schools, in classrooms. School committee obviously sets the direction and goals for all of the schools. Principals are accountable to your superintendent. The work can't necessarily come alive at the district level. The district sets that tone, sets the expectations. The work comes alive in schools and in classrooms. And so, the district would, the role of the district would really be strategic planning, identifying resources, and then sort of the on-the-ground work, again, is happening within your schools. So, in closing, I do want to note that the data sources that speak to student perceptions indicate that students report that teachers and staff care about them, treat them with respect, and they are accepted as valued members of the school communities. That's a wonderful foundation to build upon. Thank you.
Questions?
Questions?
Questions or comments? Mrs. Brand?
I just want to, because I didn't read the whole of the, the audit, which was my Sunday. I do have to say how comprehensive, and I'm surprised by all the various elements and the steps that you took into covering each and every avenue of the, of the areas that you investigated in, and, and I just, it's just very well-done, very well-organized, very understandable, lot of information. But I do thank you and Ms. Elliott for coming together and creating this, because it truly is very enlightening as to how we, we can continue the conversation and to prioritize how are we going to approach this piece, and where do we approach it? And, and it's, it's like a strategic plan. It's, it's a, an alive document, you know what I mean? And it's, it's just going to be perpetual, I think, driving our work for years to come, because I don't see this, I see this evolving and over-changing, and I don't think it's a one-note, this is where you are, you know, this is what you need to focus on. But I thank you, because I think it's a good foundation of which to step off on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Turner?
Thank you very much. Two, two points, or one's kind of, one's a question.
I think the, the forward-looking evolution of Wilmington, I think, is a very important point to consider in our hiring practices and those sorts of elements, which you can, you can be very, very tactical about how we hire and, and making sure that we have a good representation and then, and then making sure we have the programs that support that that evolves. What I'd be curious about is on, on slide seven, we had the recommendations. When you did the deeper dive, were there ones that as you're going through this list, people kind of jumped out of their seat at and said, because obviously, to your point, the priorities, you have to select. You can't do it all. Was there, did you get a sense immediately from that group as to things they saw on this list where, yes, that's something we are already started on or something we should do next? Did you get a sense of where they felt, part of it is, sorry, not really a sentence there, part of it is the more engaged the people on the ground are doing the work, the more likely for success. And so in some ways, where they're driving towards are places where we can support and reinforce, as opposed to if they're driving in one direction and say, "Well, what about that?" You create attention in, in actual getting good results. And so did you get a sense today?
Well, so one of the things we talked about was, do schools wait to do this work until the district gets a strategic plan around it, defines equity for schools so that there's this through line or alignment, right? And we talked about an opportunity that schools have now is to work on within their school improvements plans to name an equity imperative. So if you think about a school improvement plan, traditionally they have, you know, the vision, the mission of the school, and then they start to outline an action plan they align to the district's strategic plan. So we talked about, so I want to answer your question in that it varies from school to school, right? Because every school has their own context. And an equity imperative would provide the opportunity at the school level for school teams and stakeholders within that school to start to talk about looking at our data, whether it's quantitative, qualitative, looking at their data, what is our equity, equity challenge in our particular school? And what can, what do we have the control to do about it? And can we start that, can we start that work? So it's not as if, you know, certain recommendations sort of rose to the top. It was more about what next steps can schools take while the district is doing the important work, and I say, when I say district, I mean school committee as well, doing the important work of defining educational equity and setting forth a strategic direction for schools. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Other questions? David or Jay?
Yeah, I have a question I'd like to ask about. I noticed, so looking through the data collection, and of course, this is a major thrust of the, the audit, because looking at the data, in, because of the general demographics of Wilmington and our schools, there are categories in which we have very small numbers of students. And, you know, trying to, trying to get like the right information out of data with small numbers of elements when you have a small, you know, and when N equals something small can be tough. And I was wondering if you could just speak a little bit to what you think are the, sort of the best way and maybe some of the things to be a little bit careful about when you're, when we're dealing in some cases with small populations? Not to suggest, of course, that in any way that it's not important that the, you know, that the number of people in the category, but just that as far as being able to understand the real issues, that that can be a challenge.
Right. Thank you for that question. So in the report, I, my goal was to, if I captured a percentage, tried to capture the actual number of students as well, so that readers would realize if it was a, if it was a large, if it was a large percentage, I'm thinking just off the top of my head, the, now I just lost it off the top of my head. The number of students either in gradu-, graduating or dropout, right? Because two more students in the Latino Hispanic group dropped out, it made the percentage seem really, you know, sky-high. So we always want to say, well, how many students is that, and to your point, that doesn't make it any more or less important, but it is the context of the, of thinking about the work to be done. So, you know, my suggestion always is when you offer percentages, put the actual student numbers behind them so that the community understands that, what those actual numbers are.
Are you there? Hello?
Yeah, thank you.
Must be those live photos.
I know, exactly. I have a couple of questions. So I'm going, so I, if I have a, a thought and I'm just curious, so it's such a, it's such a big report, and as I was going through it, I was like, I wish we could take it in chunks. And so I guess one of my questions is, would there be a recommendation for, we do have an equity subcommittee. And so part of me, as I was reading this, was like, oh, I wondered if we should have kind of gotten into this together to sort of start to set up, like, here's how we, here's how we're thinking about it. This just feels like it's so much and it's so big. You know, so part of me is wondering, does it make sense to do like policy and the subcommittee looks at that particular section and then brings forth some recommendations for the full school committee on policy and then go to teaching and learning? Like, I guess in terms of sort of getting into this work, what, what have other districts done that you think does work well from a, from our perspective, from a school perspective?
So I think you can have parallel tracks going on, advancing the work, as long as you have an umbrella, right, group that's really paying attention and coordinating those tracks? Because the school committee could define equity, set a vision for the district. That doesn't prevent Christine from creating professional development and creating more opportunities for students, I'm sorry, for educators to learn and practice culturally responsive teaching. Like, there's a number of things that can go on. The SEL work, that's getting already embedded. So when I think of those seven sections of the report, right, you're well on your way in many of those areas already. It's just figuring out where the priorities are within each of those seven. And I think that, you know, so I'm going to go back to curriculum instruction and professional and professional development. So I would, you know, again, best practice would be convening groups of educators and others together to say, you know, here are some findings. We have an opportunity to do some, you know, to consider professional development around culturally responsive teaching. What does that look like? How can we accomplish that? Right? So again, I, I would, I would advocate moving forward on a number of those, of those seven areas.
Excellent, thank you. You know, and so some of this data took me by surprise and some of it didn't. I think the reason we have been pushing for this audit was because we knew that we needed to see it in black, we needed to see it on paper, like, for us to say, like, I feel like this isn't happening, but I don't really know, and so can you show it to me in focus group data? Can you show it to me? I mean, it's so hard, I think, to, to make change when you can't start with, okay, well, here's, here's where we are. But, but we have been working on cultural responsiveness for many, many years. We have been working on diversifying our, our libraries, and yet the numbers are quite, the percentages in those surveys are very low about students being, finding people who look like them in their texts and their book. And so I was like, oh, that's interesting, because it's so, from, from my perspective, there's some stuff that I'm like, okay, we clearly haven't, this I know we're not doing, but actually we've been, this has been a focus for at least three to five years. And so how, I mean, how long does it take to show? And 38%, I thought that was pretty low, considering we've had all of these moves to, to get better at that work. So the, I think, when you highlighted it, and like, you've done such a lovely job at sort of helping us to, to look at them as opportunities, but the fact that our LGBTQ+ students clearly do not feel safe and supported, I think that certainly for me, it's like a striking takeaway that we need to, that needs to be a real focus, I think, for our, for our district as we, as we move forward. And then some of the other things that I, and I'll stop here, but it's just some of the, the high school courses, and so who's taking those advanced courses and who's not taking those advanced courses? And this is what the research tells us. I mean, I read this research all the time, so I wasn't, it was exactly in line with the research, right? But I was like, ah, wow, it's actually happening here too. And so I think it's really important for families and for, for everyone involved in this district to look at that data clearly and say, oh, that's interesting that we may not be treating all of our students equitably. Because here it is, because they're not all getting the same advantages that other students, their white counterparts are getting, and that's problematic. You know, so it's sort of how to go about this by saying, okay, I feel like we do need to say, okay, this is a striking issue, we got to start there. But I also don't, like, in some, in a kind of a sense of urgency, as opposed to, okay, we're going to go one step at a time. I'm like, okay, well, this is actually really bad, and some, some of it's great and some of it's really not good, and so we need to kind of, you know, so just tackling this, I think a lot of us this week, we didn't, you know, I just got some mess, I saw some questions going to Dr. Rand just about the data and trying to unpack that. And I feel like as a committee, we're going to need more time to sort of sit with that. As I imagine our teachers and administrators who are working directly, I mean, we're not working directly with kids, but those who are working directly with children are going to need more time to really sit with this. So I guess I would just, you know, close by saying I'd love some updates on what that's going to look like, you know, for us, like, as we're looking at policy and we're looking at some of these things at a, at a, this level, what's actually happening in those, in those classrooms? So, so I guess not a question. Just a monologue.
I think clearly the district has been doing the work, and the fact that students aren't yet seeing it is worth further explo-, exploration, right? Is it that it's not explicit enough for the students? Is it, you know, is instruction designed in a way where there is culturally affirming, where it's recognized, it's talked about in classrooms, right? Because sometimes you do need to make it, make that instruction very explicit and talk up, so it, you know, an example I use quite a bit is if, if, if in the classroom there, it could be math, you could pick any content area, you can find diverse experts, models in those fields to talk about. So to what extent are teachers creating opportunities, and again, not a judgment about teachers, right? This is, we're all on this journey together. So to what extent are there these opportunities created in the classroom where talking about diversity is explicit and recognized? And then kids can recognize it at times, right? So, you know, but again, that's just me saying that to you. That may not be the situation, right? Who, who knows? That's the further inquiry, as I think you're suggesting, like, let's figure, let's figure some of this out.
And then I see your hand, but just, but that other piece, families of students with IUPs, there was definitely sort of a really not feeling that they have someone they can talk to, and I'm just sitting here going, my goodness, we really try, I mean, I, you know, when we did the Walker Report, those many, it feels like many years, I mean, not very many, many years ago, but years ago, we were told explicitly, like, these are the sorts of things that you need to work on. And from our perspective, we, I mean, I know it takes time and I understand that, but I still think that that, to me, is like a real red flag, like, ooh, so something's not, something's not translating or something's not working in the way that we would have expected by hiring some additional positions or, you know, those sorts of things. So, okay, sorry, I'm j-.
No, no, it just popped in my head, I didn't want to lose it. So I've got a, how, I've got a question for you, whether you can answer it in a general context or not. In the overall collection of data, does any of this work focus on students who may be a part of two equity-like, equity-challenged groups? Let's say the LB, let me say this right, LGBTQ plus community who might have also a, whether it be autism spectrum diagnosis or a learning disability or an ADD piece? Because I see that, I would speculate that something in that realm would offer a different, a much different perspective and, and more lack of support as they identify, as well as they, as they navigate their learning experience. Does any of this work, and granted, I don't, I hope it's not getting into the minutia, but does any of this work focus on those groups that may have multiple, may have a foot in each?
Absolutely.
So, okay.
Absolutely. You, you, thank you for saying that, because absolutely you have to when there are multiple things for students going on, right? We can't look at students as just sort of in a silo, right? We know that there's intersectionality between identity, disability, you have to look at very holistically at students.
Okay. I just wanted to make, there's so many good places to start, and I'm like awaiting to like email Jen.
Another subcommittee.
No, 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 but I, no, it's just organizing how we're going to approach that and stepping off as to what would make time and effectiveness and efficiency.
I just don't, I don't want this to sit. I was like, okay, we got the presentation, we're good, like.
Right, yeah.
And that's how, when I first, when I actually went, I was like, I texted you, I'm like, this is too big, we've got to cut this, we've got to like break this down into multiple meetings, because otherwise I just feel like it gets so glossed over and some of those important points don't get made and don't get publicized because we're just sort of giving people this huge handbook essentially. And they're like, okay, good luck, like, you know, so I would really like to just bring this back little by little so that we can really under, more deeply understand some of these, some of these findings.
I did like your suggestion about using the equity subcommittee as a part of this work, because I think as we do approach it in chunks, I think it would help the, me, for the committee to have that initial discussion and see what the best way to approach it. And, you know what I mean? I think it would just be more effective and efficient, especially with the involvement of the, of the board itself.
Thank you.
Could I, oh, go ahead, please. Go, go ahead.
Jesse, go.
So, thank you, and thank you. This is, I'm still admittedly like going back to it and trying to reread it and sort of re-digest it, but I guess the one question I have, sort of broadly speaking, when you started to, to get into the work and get some of the survey results and see what the district has been doing, did anything jump out at you as sort of unexpected or surprising, maybe not necessarily as an outlier, but, oh, I didn't, you know, I didn't see this coming, but it, there was enough response behind it that it wasn't just a one-off?
Thank you for your question. I think for me, and that's part of the reason I highlighted it in elements of the report, was sometimes this disconnect, right, between what students perceive or feel as they responded in the survey and how educators did, right? And so I always, when I see data like that, I always wonder, you know, sort of what's going on, what's going on there? And it could be different in every community, what's going on there, right? But that's worth, that's sort of like, hmm, so that's why, let me put those in there because I think that's worth further exploration by the district. Why is there this, why is there this disconnect, right? Because clearly your teachers absolutely want to fill in the blank, right? That's why they're in the profession. But why aren't students receiving it in that way, perceiving it in, in that, in that way? I think the other thing for me in doing the report, there is, and I'll just share, you know, from my own experiences, for, for one of my superintendencies, I shared this earlier today, there's an absence of talk about race in documents or in focus groups or, I mean, kids raised it a li-, you know, raised it a little bit. And in one of my superintendencies, when I came in, I noticed that people weren't talking about race, and when I would raise it, the response I would often get is, we're colorblind, we see all kids the same. And so if that is, the, so for me in my superintendency, that, I knew where my work was as soon as I heard that, right? Because we have to talk about race in schools, we have to affirm students' identities and their, and their backgrounds. So creating, creating a space for those conversations to occur in a very safe environment, you know, I'll just speak very frankly, as a, as a white person, when I started to talk about race, I was afraid, like, I'm going to say something that's particularly in a superintendent position, right? I'm going to say something that's going to really like ripple through the community, upset people, but I had to start to, in, you know, some, in some of the literature, they'll speak to it as racial literacy as an example, there are other definitions of racial literacy, but to build the vocabulary- upset people, um, but I had to start to, in, you know, some, in some of the literature, they'll, they'll speak to it as racial literacy as an example, there are other definitions of racial literacy, but to build the vocabulary of the community to talk about race, um, I think, you know, so that's sort of, I noticed, I didn't see a lot of references to students' identities, particularly their racial identities.
Appreciate that.
I'm sorry, Dr. Brand.
Uh, thank you, and thank you for your questions. Meg, thank you for the presentation. You know, a couple of, of thoughts, and I don't mean do I want to sort of bring this to a close, but maybe if questions have been asked, a few things that come to my mind, and perhaps if I could respond to some of your questions around, so what's next? But, you know, first, when we sat here in this very room, we were talking about this earlier with, uh, we had the entire, just for context, the entire extended leadership team here this afternoon who received, uh, you know, this report. Um, the extended leadership team is all of our instructional leaders throughout the district, um, so just think that's worthwhile to share. When we sat here in this room, uh, three years ago, three and a half years ago, as we developed with fifty-plus people our strategic plan for the district, um, you will recall that inclusion and equity and, uh, the pursuit of those, you know, those values and diversity were, was an important component of our plan. In thinking back to that point in time, what wasn't in our plan was an equity audit as an action step. And I, I think it's understandable, because it's not something that necessarily was sitting there in front of us, or you as a committee in terms of a tool, uh, to, to gather information. Um, but I want to, I want to take this, this moment and certainly, you know, I think our community should be proud and applaud your efforts and your commitment as a committee, because when this emerged about a year ago, um, with a lot of, uh, deep thinking and conversation with the Equity Subcommittee and in turn, in terms of this committee, uh, you recognize it was an important opportunity for us to sort of pivot and, um, you know, put into the ground some stakes to gather data, right? To gather, not just sort of develop or cultivate action steps around what sort of lofty goals we thought would be a way to move us forward, but recognizing that we needed something more tangible, and I, and I think that this is it. I would also point out that for anyone who's sort of wondering, well, where do we sit as a community, as a school district in terms of embarking upon an equity audit? Um, it will not take one long at all to put in, to the Google machine, right, equity audit and school districts around. And absolutely without question, those that are progressive from Belmont to Hingham to Sudbury to Westwood and the line of, of districts behind that would continue, you will find, anyone will find, that they've also taken those steps to complete an equity audit. So we sit in good company in terms of, in terms of taking this work seriously, and I think putting us on an important path. I think the, maybe the final thing to say, well, two things, I think that the Equity, uh, sorry, the Equity Subcommittee, I would love to suggest is a great vehicle for us to consider in terms of taking this work. But I also, um, and it's a, it's, it will be an agenda item for next meeting, not tonight, where we find ourselves now with the place of sort of a, a strategic plan coming to an end almost, and again, I'd like to talk about this more at a subsequent meeting. I think actually the timing of this could not be more perfect, because I think that we have the time now to take this data and use it, um, and unpack it and understand it, and through that, identify what would be probably very appropriate to consider including in our next strategic plan, which I, you know, uh, what I will suggest is, we take this year to build that, to refresh that plan and, and end the year with that in place. So, um, I think that, uh, we talked this afternoon with the extended leadership team and Meg's ideas around taking some steps towards that within the school improvement plans, and I'll be working with principals on that very thing, you'll see those plans in October for the school year. So we've got some things in, in motion, but I think, um, the heart of this data and the feedback here couldn't be at a better time for us, for you as a committee, us as a leadership team, to think about what's most important to drive our work forward, so.
Yes, thank you. So, and to segue from what you've just said, so with all of this that we're, I've looked, we're all, I think, all looking forward to breaking it down and trying to see how we can best utilize it and get working, with school improvement plans starting,
Right.
How are we going to approach, how do you think administrators will approach that work with regards to which expectations? Because I, I did, you know, I do understand that each school may have a different
Right.
focus area. Um, what expectations, I think, will your leadership team kind of offer the schools to ensure that what they incorporate into their school improvement plans for this year are, and I know they know their schools better than anything.
Yeah.
But how, how is that going to translate and transform?
So, uh, so a couple of things, first off, just as a reminder, um, with your, your support, we ended, um, or we started the school year, we ended this last year, uh, with the discussion here at the table about how we would approach getting back up to speed with so much of our work, including school improvement plans. Um, the, what I've shared with the, uh, the principals after we talked here as a committee is that, um, they would come before you for review, uh, in, at the October 12th meeting.
Okay.
We wanted, you know, recognizing that we're coming off of still a pretty challenging year last year, we wanted to get back in play, in session, and, and they, um, actually worked on, started to work on those plans today. They just received this report really like all of you, though, so it's, it's hot off the press, and so giving them, and in turn, their school councils, a little bit of time to wrap their minds around what would be sort of sitting out there as a, as a first step in this direction, I think that's, that's one thing. And also number two, we're still heading in the direction of trying to be more aligned than different across our schools, uh, you know, and, and that work continues. And so I, I would imagine, I don't want to speak for them in this moment, but I would imagine that they will probably have some recommendations of something that could sit there that's more common, um, still, still acknowledging perhaps some of the nuances of their own building. So we still have to have more conversation with the principals.
Okay.
And it's, you know, it's something that will be before you soon, um, in, in a few weeks, but there definitely will be, uh, and my expectation for them, that they will have at least a goal and action step, um, to take in this direction.
Very good, thank you.
One last, um, piece from, from my perspective, um, when I look at the, the last page in there is the cultural responsive continuum from Desi.
Yeah.
It's a very interesting chart, but it is, to the intersectionality topic you guys brought up, one, well, it's actually two or three aspects within that continuum, and in some ways, if we had that, and, and it's, it's good to see, and we can think about where we are on that continuum, and obviously there's always work to be done, but it also reflects that there, some of the work's already been done. But if there's a similar sort of way to view the, the economic diversity, the educational special needs diversity, and you have those two or three or four ways you can, then you can look at all the results, it's kind of being an analytical way of looking at it, look at the results, look at where you are on the continuum, and then say, okay, on this one, we're doing relatively well, but this one, we're relatively far behind, so that's how we can create priorities. If there was a similar, similar way in the other intersections to, to view that, it might be a really helpful way to, to take all this data and make it into a, something we can actually visualize where our priorities are. I think, again, this chart is a really useful one. It's fairly simple, um, but it gets to a lot of the conversational ways you can talk about
Yes.
things. And if we had the same sort of a chart for the other pieces, it might really help that work of, of the Equity Subcommittee, for example.
That's great, thank you, Mr. Turn. And I would just encourage people, um, obviously, people who are working and volunteering for the district, but also families, to take a look at this, I think it's just really great work, and I'm really proud of it, and I'm just grateful that you were able to pull this together, and then the work presented just earlier, um, by Christine and India is just, like, it's all sort of coming together, and then the tiered work, I'm like, okay, like, little by little, I feel like we're, we're getting away at this, but I, this piece here, I, I wrote down just a few things, but an analysis of Wilmington High School core courses that offer College A or honors suggests Hispanic, Latino, African-American, economically disadvantaged, and students with disabilities are less likely to be enrolled in honor-level courses. And then you provide an example of core English courses below with all those numbers. And I just think those sorts of things, you know, when someone says to me, what do you mean when you say equity, and what do you mean, and I'm like, it means that we're making sure that we're providing equal access for all students. And that's, and I look at some of this, and I'm like, we're not, we're not doing that. And so that's what drives us, I think, as a committee, to make sure that we're doing that for all children in Wilmington. Um, so I think there's just really great data here, and I appreciate it. Um, so to you, and then Christine and India, thank you, um, for helping us with this work, we really do appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Of course, thank you. All right, so that, are we going to go into the handbook?
We can, if you prefer, or the, the discipline first, if you want to switch the order, certainly.
Yeah, I think, for some reason, it feels very odd to me to move into student discipline from that. Feels like, I'm like, okay, here we're saying all this, and then we're going to jump right into this discipline chart, feels a little bit odd to me. So I guess if we could do the handbook first, um, and then we can look at the student discipline section. And we'll welcome Dr. Quirk to join us.
Hello, good evening.
How are you? So I, um, you, everyone got a copy of the new version of the handbook, right electronically, and the chart? Yes, I got it electronically, yes.
Yes.
Sorry.
Yep.
Um, so I just would like to, um, go over a few of the major points, um, of, of the changes. Uh, as I stated in the last time I was here, which was in June, you know, the goal is to streamline this document, right? That it's a document that, because of its size at one point, wasn't utilized as, as much as it could be, right? So, um, you know, a lot of the changes were u- updates of things, uh, making sure that I, um, corrected any typos, but, um, some different points that I'd like to bring, um, your attention to is how, um, at the beginning of each section, um, page, I put a little small table of context there, so it's contents there, so that way people can reference that, so that they know exactly what they are getting into when they dive into that section. Let's see, uh, my school advisory council, we were able to pull that together last year. They were instrumental, the members of that, um, committee, um, in, in instituting these changes. We had gone through the handbook, um, in the few meetings that we were able to have, we, we, we went through the handbook, so they helped me with all of this. Uh, some updates, updates include, um, an activity block that we'll be instituting this, this fall, and, um, directed study and how that'll look, um, going in the fall, and I can go into more detail about that. Uh, some updates to, um, our expectations, now that we're going back, um, which include like cafeteria hallway, some of the big areas, um, we were going back into, um, not having some of the protocols that we needed to have previously. The addition of additional clubs that I was able to, um, add on, um, which include an additional art club because of its popularity, um, a GSA, and the World Cultures Club, which I think is timely, um, with that report, that's good. Um, and, uh, my, the, the discipline section has been removed, um, per that, um, other conversation that will happen. Uh, Ms. Peters and I had worked on it together to provide vertical alignment, um, with the discipline, um, and so that's why it's removed. If it's approved with that, then I will add it back in. And, um, I also tried to condense, uh, the school committee policy section, I had links to every single, um, policy before, now it's, um, just some of the highlighted or more important ones for, um, the middle school. Um, so those were some big changes that's, that I had gone through. Um, the discipline one was definitely in working with, um, Dr. Brands and Ms. Peters, um, and he'll talk about that more, but that was, that's a big change too, to provide vertical alignment between the two schools, the secondary.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments? I'm sorry, I'm looking for an email from one of our members to see if there's anything in there. Um, can you, the directed study?
Yes, ma'am.
Just as a, so a couple people asked me about that.
Mm-hmm.
I don't see it in the schedule, can you explain?
Yes, so.
Because a couple of families have come to me asking about that.
So it was, uh, if you remember, last year, directed study was implemented because of the needed, needed, uh, additional lunches, and to balance the schedule, there was this half-hour pocket, uh, of time, which, um, a- and it became, as I like to call them, COVID bonuses, that, uh, we figured out something that sort of worked.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the downside to doing that, or doing any of the protocols, including having the directed study, is that it took core ti, uh, class time away, right? And so with the goal of this year, um, to try to get as much class time back, um, time in the classes as possible, um, but then also wanting to, you know, take a small step into getting an advisory block and things of that nature, and not wanting to lose any bonuses, um, we will, once in the six-day cycle, um, have a directed study block, and once in the six-day cycle, have the activi, uh, advisory block. Um, the grouping will be the same, they'll meet with the same person this year, you know, it might change as we go forward, but again, we're looking at a three-year plan for that to get it into a full, full swing. Um, we thought, um, I worked with the, uh, advisory, uh, we had, I got a team together of teachers, uh, for the advisory, um, curriculum team that, that we have, and we thought that that might be a nice balance of, of the twice a week, um, to do that. I know it's not as much as it was last year, but we're not completely giving it up to see how we can, see what comes out of it, um, in, in looking things through. And then us still allowing core class time. Um, the reason, there's a couple of reasons why it's not in the schedule, to get back to your question, Mrs. Bryson, right? Um, in Aspen, it can't be done without leaving holes, um, in the schedule. So, um, there, you just like, uh, one of the biggest issues that we have with Aspen is, um, uh, the lunch isn't exactly where it should be for two out of the three grades, if, as parents, you've noticed that. Um, if I was to implement that extra block for those two out of the six days, it would cause holes in the other, um, days, and I felt that that was going to be more confusing. And when holes, I mean a blank space in the schedule. Um, what we're going to do is that, uh, I will have a separate schedule for time, um, that I'll be passing out to teachers and to parents and to students for those days. Um, I wanted to be able to give the details more to, to teachers, um, on Monday, but everyone will be getting that, that information shortly, if that helps.
I'm sorry, can you just explain it to me one more time?
Absolutely.
So you said six-day, what does that mean exactly?
So we, we run on a six-day cycle, where there's, um, and it ties into services for special ed, why we have to think of this way, and with shared staff that I have, so if, um, uh, with staff that I, like, Ms. Perkins, who is the orchestra teacher, is all over the district, so having that six-day schedule helps, as long, as well as the blue and white. So we have three blue days and three white days.
Okay, sorry, that's the six.
Yeah, that's the six. So, um, on one of the blue days.
Because we changed from the waterfall.
The waterfall's gone.
Which I didn't even, my daughter looked at my son's schedule and just, they got rid of the waterfall, and I said, is that good or bad? And she says, oh, I think I like this much better. So I was just like, okay, you know?
It was actually a double waterfall.
Sounds more like a tsunami.
Yes, it was very confusing, but we, um, kept the class, so basically what is happening is that the classes are at the same time every day.
So you have, ma'am, in the beginning of the day, you have.
In math, at the beginning of the day. What was happening was the first three periods were rotating through, and the last three periods were rotating through. Very confusing.
So will they take the spot of the UA classes on the odd?
No, on the, on those two days, they'll be shortened. So a half hour will be pulled from all of the classes, much like the half hour, um, that happened last time. Um, but what, the, the good thing about this is that everyone will have the same half hour. Where before it was just a sixth grade, a seventh grade, and an eighth grade, everyone will be, um, having advisory or directed study at the same time, which will allow for a better dispersment of staff. It causes more logistical problems with locations, but we're working that up.
Excellent, thank you very much. And there was just another question here, so one of our members who is not here had sent a couple of things, um, on page thirty-six, uh, just looking for an explanation on why the middle school is kind of sticking with that rule of sitting with your house at lunch, um, and how does this uphold the circle values? Um, sort of saying, you know, I know kids over the years who would like to see a friend and sit with them at lunchtime when they're separated all day, um, love to see us move toward allowing this at some point. Is there a specific reason, um, that we have children sit with their, with their houses instead of being able to, to find other friends in other houses?
Sure. Um, you know, we, it is a step from where we used to be. Um, originally, it was that, uh, we'd start out the school year for a good two months where they sat by, uh, homeroom.
Yeah.
Um, and then it moved eventually to where, um, this is when I first got there, um, where they could eventually be sitting by their house. Um, you know, I think. You know, I think that we're not opposed to eventually moving to that. We are moving away from the, we kind of had a reward, we tried to do it as a reward. But just trying to be more vertically aligned with the high school, so that, you know, I mean, I don't want to misspeak here, but I, I can eventually see where like, you know, the older you get, the more freedom you get in the cafeteria is what we're looking for, for a plan. As well, you know, I mean, coming from the fifth grade, um, they're more restricted, so by, and we want to get them to the right place. So, you know, eventually they can sit where they'd want to and also be able to line themselves up, which is the expectation that they have here when they're at the high school. So, over the three years, that would be our goal. But to start off, probably that's the way it's going to be.
Thank you. Any questions? I, I'll keep going, but you know.
Just one, thank you, one small detail one, is the list of clubs exhaustive? I thought there were at least one or two others. I'm speaking specifically because I, I, we saw a great presentation from the robotics club from high school here last year, and I remember there was a robotics club at the middle school as well.
I apologize if that's not listed, there will be robotics club, I can confirm that.
Good to know, thank you.
What page are you on?
It's, uh, it's on page something.
Okay.
Page forty?
I, I started scrolling somewhere else, sorry.
That's okay, no worries.
Thirty-nine and forty, so I apologize, uh, robotics club should be in there. I guess maybe I was just so excited about the, the ones.
Yes, and there are good ones, thank you, Friday.
Um, sorry, did you get your question in? There you go, okay. On page thirty-four, so lockers are back? Is that?
Lockers, well, the students will be.
Need a true news story?
Students will be given a locker, um, and a lock, um, but, but we will keep the way we kept it for the rest of the, the school year last year, where, um, we will not be scheduling time for students to go to their lockers. I think that again, it's something, uh, vertically aligned for the high school, that that's the expectation they are. You know, there will be the time in the morning, of course, and there will be the time at the end of the day, but if they need, um, um, their belongings, that seemed to work well for the rest of the year.
I did hear, like, sorry to interrupt, but on that exact point, I did hear that there was some, what, whoever was first out the door at the end of the day, the way the schedule worked, there wasn't necessarily time, depending on where you were in class and where your bus or whatever it was, to go buy a locker.
And that, that is, that is a, um, a point that we will have to iron out. Your child must have experienced that more of a, as a, um, a sixth grade student, because their UA is at the end of the day. So, um, we, there would be a locker time for, prior to that, um, UA time.
Um, just so.
The other grades would be on team, so they would be in that cl- in that area where their locker is.
I think one of the only differences I, I see, um, between the middle and the high school is that they don't have the same classes every day at the high school. So you can literally just bring for four classes, whereas at the middle school, you need to carry for all classes. And I, I hate to go back to this backpack, but it is, I mean, even, so I know the supplies have been, um, what'd you call it? Streamlined, and in advancement, I'm not disagreeing with that. But, but my, my child has nine folders, nine notebooks, three composition books, a sketchbook. This does not even include that he'll be carrying a math book, I'm sure, and last year there was a science book, and a saxophone. And saxophone music. Uh, it is, like, unpacking the bag, I can't, he has a brand, I can't even fit, even, I mean, I can't even fit it all in there. And I'm like, so the problem is that you can't, I want a light in the bag, and I think we, everyone's tried to do that, but he still has to carry for all classes every day. And so I, I know we've been trying to lighten the bag, but it's the backpack, but it's not lightening. And so I, I don't, I don't know what to, what to do about that necessarily. He can't leave things home because he has everything every day, and that is the difference between the high school.
So he has seven, has seven classes out of the nine a day. You know, there, two of them are different, um, on a blue day and a white day. Um, meaning he doesn't have band every day, for example, so he doesn't need a saxophone every day. You know, uh, I, I understand the heaviness, I mean, we are allowing that, the, the bigger backpacks too, because the issue was prior, we didn't allow that because they were leaving those in the locker. But they had the, the drawstring backpacks, but then the, um, wear and tear on the Chromebooks was, um, the other piece. With that, I think teachers are continuing to try to be as, um, online as possible too. So, um, hopefully to help alleviate, um, certain books and, and things of that nature, so it's still a work in progress.
Mrs. Burns?
Um, just to segue on that, that topic, I know that weight of, this is, this isn't a new discussion with regards to the backpacks, the amount of what these kids have to carry for the school year. And as having a previous colleague who's a chiropractor, um, it is concerning because it just, it does to speak into the, the health and wellbeing of our, our students, physical.
And, and please know, I'm not saying they can't go to their locker, we're just not scheduling time out of the day for them to be able to go. They can ask to go.
What, what's the likelihood the, the teacher would allow that? You know what I mean? I mean, you never, you know what I mean, I mean?
Sorry to interrupt, but to, to that point, lunch before or after, if you have at the beginning of the day, if you have before or after lunch, one way, whichever side works.
Yeah.
And then at the end of the day, then they at least potentially could take out things for the second half versus.
Which alleviates.
And I, yeah, that same, that same colleague once mocked me because one of my children was well over, well, was approaching twenty-five pounds on their backpack. And said, you're going to kill your kid's bag.
I'm just.
Hi, my friends, I'm so sorry, I just, I'd really like to try and stick with Robert's rules.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
What's happening is we're just kind of getting into this conversation. So, Mrs. Burns?
Uh, uh, just, um, speaking that, I, I think, um, something more structured in that, that expectation, because I don't think there are students who either feel comfortable in asking and they'll suffer with it. Um, I just, it's, and I'm not saying that what you're offering isn't possible, and, but I, I also don't know how that would be coordinated with multiple classrooms. You know, if even one or two students ask in each period, you'll have twenty or thirty kids in the hallway. Um, I just thought that, um, so just something I would think to think about, because I really do think that the, uh, the physical wellbeing of these kids and what they carry on their backs, um, are, are significant. And, um, it's just something to be mindful of, not to say that you haven't been, but you, you know what I mean?
No, I, I, please know, it's something that I've thought about. It's just that there are definitely some other benefits that have happened since not having of two. Um, you know, the lockers are very, having everyone out at the lockers at the same time created, um, regardless of how many adults are in the hallway, uh, you know, difficulty.
I've been lost in those hallways too, when, at that.
With students and their interactions with each other, regardless of how many adults we have out there. So, um, there have been less issues at the locker since not having a scheduled time as well.
If I may, and it is, uh, it is certainly, um, locker, no locker, the issue is, is, is real in terms of how much, uh, weight that is literally in the backpacks. And I'm sure, um, while we have the Chromebooks, we're not entirely and completely virtual in terms of our learning platforms, and we can acknowledge that. I also think though that there can be conversations with teachers to be also mindful, especially for those that have the textbooks, uh, if they're not perhaps being used every day. Uh, you know, there, there are things that is, you know, I know as a principal that we had these conversations about to, just to, it is sometimes we, and it's not, it's understandable. Sometimes when you're in that environment, as a teacher, you're thinking about your program and your, but once you start to piece together the, uh, all of the other teachers, colleagues, programs around you, realize, whoa, we have to think a little bit differently. Uh, a little bit more holistically at what it is that we're trying to collectively ask these students to carry. So, I, I, I do think there needs to be mindfulness to it. I'm not sure that, I'm not suggesting that we can eliminate all of the things, but certainly cognizant of how much weight is in those, or in those backpacks is, is a real issue. And I certainly hear that for sure, so.
Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't.
Thank you, Dr. Quirk.
No, no, it's okay.
Okay, so, thank you. I think that the, I love the principal, I love these, and the assistant principal messages, is that new? Or do they always do that?
They were in there last year.
It's nice. Um, and I think it.
They've been updated.
What's that? It looks good, yeah. And the way it's all, um, situated, I think is great. Um, I love that the discipline's toward the end, so I really do appreciate, um, the changes and the reconfiguration we made, so thank you. And he, and we will not vote on this now, but we will.
Yes, uh, you know, we, just as a point, so, by master and ally, you don't have to, it's been customary to do so here. And just, you, you know, the, and thank you to Dr. Quirk for her flexibility and yours as well too, with some of the changes that were at bay or at foot, whatever, for the spring, we thought it best to hold off on, on its presentation. It's with the intention that we'll get back to aligning it with the high school in the spring, uh, you know, going forward, so. But to be consistent with how you approached it in the past, I think that would be appropriate, uh, if you want to take a second read, uh, and improve it next time. But thank you, Dr. Quirk, for being here and for your work on it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Student discipline.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you not, yes, I am. Uh, so, uh, dovetailing completely off of handbook, but going specific to student discipline. So, um, you'll, you'll see, uh, you'll see both a cover memo as well as an accompanying document, um, that, um, has been provided to you. And I'll, I'll start by, uh, just echoing the comment that Dr. Quirk made a couple of minutes, a couple of moments ago, that there have been efforts with Ms. Peters and Dr. Quirk, um, to try and, and bring closer together, uh, specifically content around discipline. We think that that's a, both important and appropriate if we're taking a look, uh, with a hori- you know, sort of horizontal view of grades six through twelve. And so over the last couple of years anyway, there's been, um, a lot more, uh, collaboration to try and do that around discipline. Unfortunately, we, we were feeling the need, I was feeling the need, um, I, I guess, to have the high school handbook before you in the spring to get approved. Uh, there was really a timeliness to that. We were not able to capture a number of changes that were recommended, as I said in my memo, from, uh, from our legal counsel. And so, um, I apologize for that, it's, it's back here for your consideration. And really just reflective of some, uh, some, some changes that, uh, again, uh, counsel with that review has recommended. These changes are, are really rooted in trying to make sure that we're consistent with any changes relevant to developments in, in the Massachusetts general law. And, uh, so that's what's here before you. So, uh, this evening looking for, uh, two actions, and I, I didn't want to, um, uh, I didn't want to overlook the fact that you had already approved the high school handbook, um, that did include a certain student discipline code. But what we're here tonight is to seek your approval to, I guess, to amend that, um, and then devote to approve the student discipline code. So not to overcomplicate this, I, I, the suggestion is two different actions, but if you want to make them ones, that's certainly fine. But, um, I do think it's important that, uh, we have your approval on, 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 on these items. With that, happy to take any questions if you have relative to the recommended changes that have been put forth in the student discipline code.
Mrs. Burns?
I had a question which I thought, what I was referencing was on page eight, with regards to, um, students suspended or expelled less than ten days. What measure, you know, and, and how do we support them, um, educationally? The question I had, and forgive me, I can't seem to find the particular paragraph referencing, I thought it was on page eight.
Page eight, a student who's been suspended or expelled, that paragraph, the middle paragraph?
Right.
Or, or down the bottom, ninety school days?
It's about two, about, um, the educational progress piece. And, um, forgive me, I, I can't seem to locate it.
I, I think I see, well, I think I see it on page eight.
It, it, it speaks to, um, students suspended or expelled less than ten days. And there's a se- uh, sentence in there about, um, measure to allow them to access to making educational progress, I believe.
Yes.
What does that look like? I'm familiar with anyone over the ten days that they would get a tutor, but less than, I'm not, and I don't know in what context of, um, allowing them access to making educational progress would look like, um, and especially if it may be a child with, um, a disability.
Yes, right. Well, so I'm, I'm assuming here you're talking about the section that I'm referring to, but.
My apologies, I, I found it twice before tonight, so.
It's on page eight, one, I think, top of page nine.
Section twenty-one, I think, right, uh, it looks like, thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Right, so, uh, there, there is, and this is, this is an adjustment that would not be, you know, specific to Wilmington, but in accordance with what the, uh, law now, uh, requires in terms of that support. So what does that look like? I, I mean, that's not going back to sort of a, a virtual platform or Zoom platform, but just the obligation to provide, um, access and the opportunity, uh, for students to continue to try and make progress. It doesn't have to be, um, synchronous instruction, or it can be, uh, that's not what the law is speaking to, but it is speaking to the obligation to provide students who are in this sort of place of, of discipline, um, uh, some opportunity for, continue to make, to continue to work on, you know, make studies or projects or the like.
Okay, all right. I just, I, I didn't know if that meant while they were out or upon re-entry?
Uh, I would, I would suggest both.
Both, okay.
Yeah.
But it could be a variety differently, but just for.
Most definitely.
Thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Jesse.
I have one, I think, maybe point of clarification, forgive me, it's on page five, towards the top, and it's the B in parentheses, but it reads, "Any student who assaults a principal, assistant principal, teacher, teacher's aide, or other educational staff." Is educational staff maybe the wrong word there? And I'm thinking of, uh, custodial staff, food services folks, would, I don't know, are they necessarily considered educational? Or should it just be school staff or building staff or some other word that indicates?
Yeah, that's a good point.
Really assaulting anybody is unacceptable.
Yeah, that's a great question, a great catch, and I, I would, um, it is listed as that, but, uh, well, I can't speak for counsel here. I, I would think that the interpretation, I would take that to imply any staff who's working in the school facility. Right.
That's fair.
Yep.
Thanks.
Mr. Turner?
Two points, uh, one is a, a detail that might be protectionary and could eventually cause a problem. There are three places in the document where it talks about a student in an appeal process and a right to counsel, where it says, at their own expense.
Yes.
And there's five places where it says a right to counsel but doesn't say at their own expense. Which, since we say it in three places that it's at their own expense, if we don't say it in the other places, it implies that it's at our expense.
That's a very good catch, uh, and I would imagine that it's just an oversight.
I can send the page numbers if that's helpful.
I can certainly, uh, uh, certainly, we can incorporate that change. It, it is indeed that, I mean, I can speak to that, but you're right, to be consistent, um, it should, it should have been that way, so thank you for catching that.
A, a clever lawyer might have, have fun with that. Uh, and the, the other point I had was, there are four different sets of days for the appeals process to the superintendent. So in some, it, it, how long they have to appeal, and sometimes there can be an extension, how long there is to the meeting, and sometimes there can be an extension, and how long there is to respond, and there's one that actually leaves out two of the dates. And I imagine some are statutory, but if there are ones that aren't statutory, would it make sense to align them all to be consistent through the document? To say it's this, this, and this for the three pieces, if we can be consistent with that?
There is definitely a very, uh, a variation, if you will, depending on the, um, uh, the thirty-seven H, thirty-seven H and a half that dictates those days, um, that I can certainly, um, speak to. Uh, I'd have to take a closer look at those, those, um, I don't know discrepancies or what you're speaking to, um.
Give me a book. I got a book right here for you.
Yeah.
Just kidding.
Any other? And so you can write, you can send that, or you did send that already, didn't you?
Thank you, okay.
And then, um, Mrs. Plowman had sent a couple of things as well.
Yes.
That I think, again, little things that were referenced in one place but not referenced in another, so if we could just make sure all those things are cleaned up. Yeah, I'll forward that to you. Can we see a, a clean copy of this, or do you need us to approve it tonight?
No, I, I, no, I think it would be only fair to consider this, if it's too consistent with how you approve other things as a first and second read. I understand full well that we're heading into the beginning of the school year, but I think that we want this to be right, we want you to be comfortable with it. So I'm certainly comfortable with that, we can, uh, clean it up, catch those, uh, make those changes and then bring back for your meeting, um, sorry, I forget the date that that is.
The fourteenth, yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, there's a little bit of a gap in time, but, um, uh, what we have in place will prevail at the high school, certainly, you know, and then we'll make these changes. And certainly coming with this will be the, um, the need to make sure that our parent guardians and students are aware of, of any changes. So I'm, I'm cognizant of that as well too.
Okay, so that brings me back to the middle school handbook, so if we don't, we haven't approved it tonight, does that mean that it can't be sent out to families prior to our next meeting?
I think that the way that, I think that, um, I think that it can. The discipline piece is that it's separate, obviously, but, um, I, I, I think that it can, but we're, just to clarify, I think you've raised it so. we're, just to clarify, so would you like to approve that at next meeting, too? Yes, I guess.
Well, we've been, that's how we consistently done it, but I also don't want families to wait fourteen days to see the handbook. So, I'm a little bit of a quondery.
Couldn't it be added in as an addendum, since the handbook is truly on the website? So.
The discipline can, but I think your question, I'm sorry, the question is the handbook in large, right, the middle school handbook in its entirety.
Right, I mean, doesn't need, officially doesn't need our approval. So, it's more, you have to see a second read, and then, but I wouldn't want to prevent Dr. Quirk from sending it to families at the start of school, because I think families would want to see that.
Right, right.
Are we okay, are we comfortable with that? Does that make sense?
It does.
And with, so, place cards.
For the discipline, yes, yes.
Personally, I mean, I I don't know how other eminence micromanage, but I wonder if we shouldn't just have discipline sort of as its own document?
That is.
Like, it's for.
Thank you for, that is the thought actually going forward. I mean, we've had some internal conversations about, with the Ministry of a Team, about how best to approach that, and if the handbook itself may be changed, maybe nothing has to change with this. So, we actually explored this with legal counsel, too, and if we were to separate it, I checked on this, it would be the recommendation that you would take two different votes to approve both the discipline code itself, which is fine, I think, and a handbook separately. So, it may be a cleaner way to do it, if you want, going forward.
I mean, there could be a link to it, but I feel like it's just cleaner, then when things get changed at the high school, they automatically get changed at the middle school, and there's not this.
Right, right.
Lab time, if that makes sense, but. Okay, great. All right, are we good? All right, so, we, it's okay, we're comfortable, the handbook goes out to families, so Dr. Quirk is still here, so I want to make sure she knows.
And we will bring a cleaned up copy to this, of the discipline piece, to you, and then at the next meeting, and with your anticipated approval, then we will certainly push that out to families and students.
Is that, everyone's okay with that?
Great, thank you.
David, Jay? You're comfortable with that?
Okay, me.
Are you comfortable? Okay, thank you.
Okay, me, too.
Thank you, and thank you for your understanding. Sorry, it's a little, little clunky here with this, but we'll get through it.
I appreciate it, thank you. All right, our next item of business is public comment. We have one public comment here. Mr. Cohen, please state your name and address for the record. Thank you, Dr. Quirk.
Thank you.
Good evening, Jeffrey Cohen, eighteen Cobalt Street in Wilmington. This committee, excuse me, one second. First of all, there are two school committee positions up for grabs next year for the election, next year, not this year, so hopefully there's more participation for that. This committee continues to implement a warped gender ideology in our schools. You are unwilling to accept that most Wilmington residents do not want this twisted curriculum. Gender dysphoria is a medical condition that requires medical attention, not promotion by a school board. I pointed out at the last meeting that I wanted to donate a book to our school's library entitled Irreversible Damage: The Transgender Craze Seducing Our Daughters. I sent a formal request to this committee and the superintendent's office to donate this book, so that students can understand that so-called gender transitioning is an irreversible procedure that many have regretted after having life-altering and body-mutilating surgery. I received no response, so I must assume this book donation was denied. Why would you do that? The only reason I came up with is you don't want students to understand the dangers of radical medical procedures. I respectfully ask for this committee to reconsider their refusal to accept my book donation. Many parents are unhappy with the direction that this committee has chosen for our schools. I believe that the radical gender ideology being promoted by this committee has a direct negative impact on a school's attrition rate. The average attrition percentage over the past ten years is four point nine percent. However, the past two years, our school's attrition rate jumped over nine percent, which is fourth in the state. This was likely due to parents being able to see what the children were doing in schools during so-called remote learning. When the most recent attrition rates are published in a couple of months, I expect to see a similar trend. Why does this committee insist on promoting an agenda that has nothing to do with education? On May thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-two, there was a May statewide meeting called LGBTQ: Gender Identity and the Importance of Family and Student Voice. This is exactly what does not belong in our schools. The issue of gender and race will always be the exclusive responsibility of parents, not government education. This committee has also been pushing an equity agenda, despite having no measurement tools available to determine progress. It is equality, not equity, that was embraced by our founding fathers. So-called equity challenges America's bedrock principle of equality, that all people should be treated equally and judged as individuals, not as members of special interest groups. The definition of equity is having equal incomes, excuse me, equal outcomes achieved, if necessary, by unequal treatment, biased competition, or preferential judgment, judging. Equity used to be called affirmative action, but that term was toxic, so it was scrapped. Equity has no place in education. If you want to see how a twisted equity agenda might turn out, ask yourself, who is John Gault? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Item seven, other reports, any subcommittee reports? Have we?
I was, Town Hall School Administration Subcommittee has been meeting, Steve and I and Paul, and I was going to tell you guys about the special town meeting, but Dr. Quirk and I, it's a no.
Thank you.
So, that, I took your report today?
I don't think there, I don't think anyone else has met.
We have his summer. It's been summer, yeah.
All right, correspondence, Mrs. Burns?
I do, I have a written communication from our beloved Linda Peters to the school board, I'd like to read into the record. It reads, "To the members of the Wilmington School Committee, I am truly honored to have been part of the Wilmington community for so long. I wish to thank you for always being so supportive and kind, for giving me the strength and courage to move forward, and for simply being the wonderful people that you are. Thank you for honoring me with your kind words and with the beautiful plaque, but most of all, thank you for everything you do and for all that you are. Wilmington will always have a special place in my heart. Signed, Linda Peters."
Lovely. Lovely. I hope she's enjoying her retirement. I think maybe this time right before school starts is maybe the most exciting, when you're not the one doing all that prep, so I hope she's.
You know, disrespect to Ryan, but walking by that corner office and not seeing the back of her head, sort of like, wait, wait, so, I'll get used to Ryan's, the back of his head.
I know. Future school committee dates, we have, and other notable items, August thirty-first is our first day of school for grades one through twelve. September seventh is the first day for grades pre-K and kindergarten. September fourteenth is our next regular session meeting here, seven P M., and then September twenty-eighth is our second September meeting, also seven P M. And then, just take a minute to wish everyone a very happy and smooth first day of school to our families and children and teachers, staff, leadership team, and everyone else who makes our schools run. We hope that the first week is just smooth and splendid, so, and we thank you for doing all the work behind the scenes to to get us up and running, so. Any other comments before we close? David, Jay, no. David and Jay, thank you for being here remotely and so engaged throughout the meeting. I can tell you're engaged, because you're always right there when when it's time to vote, so we appreciate you joining us by phone tonight, so thank you very much. All right, and that's, our last item is adjournment. Someone have a motion?
Let's do adjourn.
Thanks, David. Jay, second. Perfect. Everyone in favor? That is unanimous. Thanks, everyone, good night.